You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the August ninth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access La Porte County dot org.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Michigan City Social Status African American males. It is August the ninth, twenty twenty three. It is noon and we have called this meeting to order and can we all stand for the blade please? Mister Millsap, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, on liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, may I have a roll call, Ms. Conley, please?
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Stacey Binning.
President.
Linda Conley, present. Pastor Carol.
Present.
Walter Tony Cox.
Present.
Shanty Patrick. Pastor Dwayne Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Robert Johnson.
Present.
Mike Anthony Jones.
Present.
Kenny Fly Senior. Is he on Zoom? Fay Moore.
Present.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, present and two absent.
We have a quorum. Um. I will, I will entertain a motion to accept the July twenty twenty three minutes.
So moved.
Second. On the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Stacy Binning.
Aye.
Linda Conley.
Aye.
Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Pass.
Treasure report, please. Commissioner Benny?
It was provided by email. Our current balance is eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Entertain a motion to accept. So moved.
Second.
One roll call?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Stacy Binning.
Aye.
Linda Conley. Aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Fay Moore.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Pass.
Okay, um, under new business, um, we are at the point in time where we have to go back and approve our uh, pa- our pa- our past minutes from twenty twenty-two. What you have in front of you also have a hard copy. I'll also email those to everyone. And I will have to go one by one and um, I'd like to start off with the, the month of May and I will entertain a motion to to a second, to accept the minutes of, uh, from May of twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
We just were asked the roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Carries. July, these are the minutes for July of twenty twenty-two. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? It passed. August of twenty twenty-two. I'm entertaining a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Pass. Um, September of twenty twenty-two, motion to, uh, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, with that being said, we have unfinished minutes that um, I, we have Ms. Conley here. I send out emails so maybe we can just get an update on this. We have March sixteenth, April, April the thirteenth and October the nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, though, though. We didn't, I didn't even receive them. You have them?
Yeah.
We're gonna go right on down the line, man. I move. I will entertain a motion to
So moved.
To
Gotta find out what month it is first.
The points you got there to much.
I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to accept March sixteenth minutes from twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I didn't get March. I didn't see any.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
I abstain. I haven't read them.
April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in fa- anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I abstain. I haven't seen them.
One extension. Mister Jones?
Abstain.
As well?
Did you, did you send them out when?
Yes.
Yeah, I said.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't see them.
So I'll re-send them.
And then this is June. You just gave us this much of right, so we're good with June?
This will be the last one. This will be June.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to accept the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I haven't seen it. I abstain.
Say for you, Mister Jones? It carries. You have the floor, Ms. Conley.
If you're looking for October twenty-two, November twenty-two and December twenty-two, um, Belle Lee has sent those out and she, she gave them to us at one of our meetings, so I don't know if anyone kept their copies or not, but they were sent by her.
Ms. Conley, we already have pa- it already passed.
They already
Okay, and with that being said, Ms. Conley, um, you have to sign the back page along with myself. I hope we can get that done today. And um, and um, go ahead and move forward with sending them to the clerk's office so we can be off the naughty list.
That's fine, fine.
Okay, under old business, um, FYI, um, we, we will not have a guest speaker today. We will reschedule that for next month with Mo- Ms. Monique Thomas, HR Director from La Porte County. So under old business, um, I put it on there to discuss our trip to Friendship Garden to see the garden. Um, what day will work for everyone here? Is it, it's open on the weekend as well, right? So I would like to do it as a quorum, at least have a quorum together and um, do it as a special meeting. And uh, we, we need, we need to, we need to go out there. I haven't, I haven't been out there. I want to do it as a group. I would like to do it as a group, so anybody, we have any dates. I'm open. I'll make myself available.
Is a Sunday afternoons good for people after church?
We really have to see what their event schedule is. I was just trying to look them up, see if they have an event. If they have an event, we probably wouldn't be able to do it unless we go into the event. So long as there's no event, okay, just should be. As long as there's no event.
Commissioner Moore, may I make a suggestion or ask you for a favor on behalf of the board? Could you reach out to them and ask them when, what days they have available for us just to come and visit our garden? I believe that Mister Jones have, he went on a visit, so I'll let him speak on what he's seen. And I know that that Pastor Hurt is also um, volunteered his time and service to go out there and help take care of the garden for this year.
Yeah, uh, me and my grandson went and visited the garden August third and it was well-kept. I mean, it wasn't, the sun hadn't damaged it too much and, you know, well-watered, you know, so. Then we left, you know, and that was, that was basically what happened that day.
Was that a weekday or?
That was uh, August third. That was on the Thursday.
Third weekday. This is very important to me and um, it should be important to all of us. I, I think it is. I just want to get out there so we can see what we can do. We, Mister, uh, our last, uh, president, um, Mister Payne took it upon himself to make sure that this got done. I believe Ms. Moore was a part of it. Mister Millsap was a part of this. This is something we cannot drop the ball on. We need to visit there. I'd like to do it before this month is over with.
Now, Mister Chair?
Yes.
I'll take it upon myself to reach out to Mister Payne to see if he can join us since it was his, uh, baby per se.
Okay, wait. Meanwhile, we'll just wait for Mister, Mister Hurt.
I was on proposal Saturday at nine o'clock. Let's get it done.
If there's no events.
It opens at now?
Saturday nine AM.
Is that doable for, we need at least have, I'm trying to have a quorum.
This Saturday? Oh, I want to. I want that.
Next Saturday.
That's nineteenth.
What day is that?
Nineteenth, nineteenth, yeah.
Okay, okay, I will be sent out and I will be sa- I will be sent out a special meeting notice, um, to everyone and we will do this on the nineteenth at Friendship Garden. I'm anticipating somewhere maybe thirty minutes and make sure that we have a list and um, of the things that they would like for us to do, which they already basically told us and the commitment from the board members for this year and we will alternate every year. Okay. Any other discussion? Um, I believe that they said he needs someone to come down and make sure they watered, watered the plants and stuff. And I know Pastor Hurt has already agreed to do that. Mister Jones has already agreed to do that as well. So we just need to know what we have to do and how to do it and we can get this done. So we can play, do our part. It's our garden, so we need to take care of it. We took it on, so we need to take care of it. Any other discussion? At this point in time, we have under old business, the Reverend Bill Ashley Scholarship Update. I will yield the floor to Commissioner Moore. She asked for this to be placed on the agenda and it was a good thing and um, we'll go there. Miss, Miss Moore?
Well, um, basically, um, Mister Ashley, Pastor Ashley, they are gonna donate to the, um, to the fund on a regular basis. If someone has family members and a congregation and then, um, so we just, as long as we leave it open, as soon as we can get our website, um, website, Facebook page, then we'll have the link on there for the, um, you know, so people can donate on a regular basis to the, to the scholarship.
Any other discussion? Mister Millsap?
Yes, I'm saying, did he commit to a dollar amount or is just open?
No, he didn't commit to a dollar.
Okay, thank you. At, at this, did he, Mister, Mister Cox?
Did he commit to a timeframe?
Oh, yeah, there, there should be soon. Definitely, no, not at the time.
We'll see what happens. I will, I will entertain a motion that whatever they, whatever Mister Pastor Ashley um, decide to donate, that, that will be the price, that will, the scholarship, that will be, uh, the amount for the scholarship. So I will entertain a motion that whatever they donate, will, that will be the amount of the scholarship. Some of
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. If in fact, then, that the, um, group is not able to get together, accumulate a decent amount, then, um, we, we look very poor and accepting that as the scholarship ceiling, you know? I think if, I think we ought to have a threshold of some sort that we can match, even, even if we make, us making our own donations. You know, I mean, if, you know, so if they could, if they don't donate over five hundred, you know, they come in with three hundred, some, you don't know what their pockets are. But, um, I think we'll have some threshold here where we, uh, add to that.
The threshold at this point, I believe Pastor Ashley made it clear that he can go to a certain dollar, dollar amount. I thought it was five hundred and he said, I might be misquoting them with, without the board's approval.
I thought he said he had a discretion or a fund. But that discretion with fund might be, an emergency, something might come up and that money has to go there. So he didn't commit, since he didn't commit and I understand him not committing.
We will be looking at this after, let's, let's make sure that we lock in whatever, if they only gonna give three hundred, then it's, then the scholarship is three hundred. If we want to add it to it, then we add to it, but we've been carrying the bucket of water for a long time, all by ourselves and our, and it shows in our bank account.
Mister Chair?
Mister. My other issue would be to address that issue when he comes up with the dollar amount, because we don't know what it's gonna be.
So I will leave this on the pending item list. Any other discussion? Miss Moore, could you please reach out to Mister Reverend Ashley and ask him, um, can he give us a timeframe on when they can get this done?
But the chair at this moment.
Mister, Mister Johnson?
At this moment, uh, Pastor Ashley and his wife is out of town, uh, with their daughter, uh, registered at the college. She's going to a law school. So I think we need to wait and discuss that with him. What would be the dollar amount that he, because at the last, uh, moment that we talked to, uh, Pastor Ashley, he, he did mention that he had to talk to his board to make that clear, what will be the dollar amount. So I think we should wait and, uh, get clarification from him. What would be the dollar amount and then go from there.
Mister Johnson, we already put it on the pending item list and we already agreed on that.
Yes.
Mister Millsap, and we just wanted to make sure Ms. Moore reach out to him to just try to, try to get some kind of timeframe, because it's all going hands on what they're doing, not what we're doing.
Got you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Next issue, subcommittee, subcommittee reports, um, education. Right now, right now, um, I have nothing to report. I was too busy trying to make sure that we get the minutes, our previous minutes done. I would just like to say that this is a new school year started today. Um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rodney McCormick. I have two kids that go to Krieger Middle School. And I just want to say to everyone out there, um, we cannot continue to allow missionary schools to, uh, do what's in the best interest of our kids. We have to intervene as parents. And I'm committed this year to make sure that my kids don't miss a day of school. And if there's any kind of conflict, I'm willing to give my number to make sure those parents, if you have any problem with my kids or my family members, please reach out to me and let's resolve this outside of the school doors. We don't need no more kids kicked out of school rates fail. This is a brand-new school year and let's make sure our attendance are good and, um, we conduct ourselves, um, in, in the best light. We don't need, we just, we need conflict resolution. We don't need to be confrontational no more, so. My number is two one nine, five six one, three nine oh three to anyone. Do you have any problems that I can help you out with or with my kids? I'd be more than happy to sit down in a calm manner and make sure that they, at the end of the day, they shake hands and that, and that problem is over with. Mister Hurt, you would like to add anything to, to the report?
No, I was in a school, well, yes, I, I was in school this morning for day one and, uh, things looked pretty smooth over at Nap School, so. I'm just encouraged to be over there as much as possible, which unless I have meetings is every day.
Next subcommittee is health. Mister Johnson?
Uh, but Chairman, uh, at this time, we do not have a full report, but there are, um, some plans in a few weeks to put our health clinic together. And once that health clinic is put together, I will report it to this committee, the date and time for that, uh, seminar. And most likely that seminar will be at, uh, the church, our pastor and that Pentecostal temple on Wallbeck.
All right, thank you. Any, anybody else want to add to that? Next, we have employment.
Yes, Mister Chair, as you, uh, spoke earlier, our HR Director for the county will be at our next month's meeting. She's in Indianapolis for training this week. Also, I would like to thank our secretary for putting out the South Shore job there. I don't know how well it was attended, but, uh, other than that, we'll see our HR in La Porte County next month.
Anyone else? Criminal justice.
As the co-chair for the criminal justice subcommittee, want to report that we did attend the field trip to the Desabele, um, Black History Museum on August the fifteenth. It was a very good success. We had approximately five chaperones and fifteen or sixteen children. We had more children that, youth that were, um, supposed to or had signed up to attend. Some of them had last-minute issues, um, but it was a really good, um, time with the youth. Um, I feel like all the youth really got something out of it. I feel like they, um, they were well behaved. Um, it was a real good camaraderie, uh, with everyone from beginning to end, so, um, some of the other chaperones may have something to interject. We also had our guest, Tommy Kalavich, that attended with us, but, um, it, it was a real success. Um, and then further, we do have some monies left. We will be here within the next, uh, two weeks, I would think, um, setting up our next subcommittee so that we can discuss, um, another pla- an additional plan to do what we can do to, um, use the monies for the youth.
I have a comment. Mister Cox? I know that, uh, Chairman, uh, spearheaded or initiated the, um, move for us to have that field trip, but I, my hat's off to Commissioner Benny. And she is definitely an A-one field marshal. She took, she, she took charge, she took charge from Jump Street.
Yeah.
And there was never a hair out of place on anybody's head in that group. It was a great success. I've seen two of the kids since then. All they wanted to know was, we're next. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mister Hurt? Yes, uh,
Mister Tommy, uh, because he was our tour guide.
Yes.
Uh, through Chicago, letting us know which train we need to be on, which bus we needed to be on and we met every schedule that we were supposed to make. And we all cross the street safely because of him.
Yes, we want to thank you for bringing this with us.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a great time. Um, it was kind of hard going in and see how, um, the past, how the past was so bad for us as African Americans. But, um, more so today, how we are hurting each other for ignorance. It was, it was hard to, um, to do it. It was good to open your, it opened my eyes up to a lot of things. We take the past for granted. We gotta remember our past or else we ain't gonna have a present, so, um, I just will leave it at that and, uh, Mister Millsap?
Yes, uh, do we have any, uh, photos that was taken of that event so, so we can, uh, at least put those on our page once we get up and running?
Yes, I have, we have plenty of photos. I did try to upload like seventy-eight of them, but for, to the old page, for some reason, we have issues and I will talk about that at the Commissioners Roundtable.
Got you.
Um, with that being said, we, I'll move over to Ms. Moore. Commissioner Moore for social factors?
Yeah, um, our social, next social factor meeting will be, um, at Michigan City Library on September the sixth. Asked that we do social factors quarterly, so that would be our quarterly meeting. The sixth. The sixth.
Okay, since I've sat on that committee as well, I do, I need to bring up, um, I'd like to have the permission of this board to also bring in, um, Heather Stevens, the, uh, La Porte County Clerk, to speak about the voting centers and the deadline for registering to vote and some other issues that we might want to address with her. Um, if I can have the approval of this board to do that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I will try to pencil in on the agenda next month for our next meeting and I will not have the good of the order on the days that we do have guest speakers, because we won't allow them to be able to speak and we are able to ask questions. I have nothing else to add to social factor. Anyone else? We are at this point now where we are at the good of the order. Um, I'd like for Commissioners to have the last word, so if I may, with the permission of the board, move the good of the order, um, below public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Yes. We did, that's why we don't like it, we like?
Long term, not just today.
Okay. All right, that will be taken care of on the agenda. Ms. Conley, please remind, when we do the agenda, that we, that we move public comments, uh, uh, we will have the last comment as Commissioners. Now I open the floor to public comments. Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, like Rodney, President McCormick said, it is the first day of classes at the Michigan City Area Schools. It's also the, it's the first day that the new Little Wolves, early childhood learning center is opening. It's gonna be opening. If it hasn't or hasn't opened now, that's the preschool for the four-year-olds. I'm very excited about that and, I mean, that's just the fourth year of our public education system. The children, my extended family are gonna attend, they're gonna dominate. They're gonna go all the way, pre-K, all the way through, through, through graduation day. I wanna, I say, um, I really enjoy our, I'm gonna allow me to tag along with you all to the Desabele Museum back on July fifteenth. Uh, you know, it was very educational with each other, all the things I could start to do it. I know in October, they always have the Universal Circus, which is also in that same area. I went there last year. I know it's, it's really, really great. They, they have that every October. Then it comes to Chicago, it's a touring circus that goes around the country. Uh, there's also a lot of great shows that go on at the Black Ensemble Theater in Chicago. That's maybe something we can think of, it's, it's not too pricey. Um, and I was just there Saturday night. I would've seen the legendary Lionel Richie, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. They really blew the roof off the United Center that night. I wanna, um, say, uh, Blair said the Board of Work, they've mentioned some of the entertainment that's gonna be. They're gonna have a tribute ban for the Eagles, Hardik, tonight. Uh, and I also mentioned to them that, and on Thursday, Arts in the Park, ne- next Thursday, they're gonna have what the Mike Dangerous Band. Really, I think we'd all really enjoy wa- seeing that. I told the board, I zoomed in, I said, we need, it's been expressed to me, I mean, we need to have more shows and entertainment with diversity here in Michigan City. You know, I don't, I talked with Brenda Temple when they opened up the sports book, if they're gonna have more acts playing at Blue Chip, she says it's really not gonna be set up that way for that. And I kind of like see the old R and B acts that we used to go see at the Star Plaza Theater years ago, coming here. Um, now, I think a lot of you know, I also serve on the Fire Merritt Commission. We need to make sure, I'd like to maybe sit and talk with, have a workshop about this. We need to adhere to the consent agenda, the consent judgment of nineteen seventy-eight. A lot of people may not know, but for every two opening or for every three openings on the Michigan City Fire Department, it has to go to either a, a, a minority or a woman. So every two, then they go from the non-minorities. They, they don't seem to understand that. I think that's very important for me. Well, we're, we're a community that has twenty-eight percent African-American. I feel over the next ten years, our Hispanic population is, is gonna skyrocket. And we also currently have four women on the Michigan City Fire Department as members and I'd like to see, I'd like to hire more of them, so. That's, I'm gonna bring that up at our next meeting. Thank you.
One second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Millsap?
Yes.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Uh, when you say they, what you refer
Talk about members of the union, the four seventy
Four seventy-five?
Yes.
So the, the union doesn't understand it?
Yeah, I think they, they want to bring in all these lateral transfers from the other fire departments, because they got their wager. We currently have forty-nine applicants right now and we're gonna do our testing on, on August twenty-third and next month, we're gonna, the ones that pass the, the, the written test and the latter client, they Next month, we're going to, the ones that pass the the written test and the latter client, they move on to the physical agility testing in September. So that's really something we need to focus. We need to stick with the ordinance.
And the Merritt Commission is responsible for that.
Yeah, the Merritt Commission is responsible for the, for the, we were the administrative authority over the membership of the Michigan City Fire Department. But not the, not the chiefs or the fire chief or the deputy chief. They're under the authority of the mayor.
Okay, and the current president of Local Force Seventy-Five is?
Captain Barrett Taylor.
Thank you.
One second, Tom. I have a question. We had discussion. I believe Ms. Moore knows this as well, but could you just explain to everybody before we let you go about the the prison closing, closing, and what is it going to do economically to our schools, to the city?
Well, I feel there's a lot of pros and cons to the prison closing. I think a lot of us may know that every ten years when the census is taken, those twenty-three hundred inmates that we have at the prison, they are included into our city's population count. And the city actually sees tax squares for them being there. And also, between the NSCO closing, with the loss of employment we're going to have between the NSCO plant and the prison close, I feel the Michigan City area school is going to take about a two, two million dollar hit in funding and revenue from that. So it's going to be a huge for the Michigan City, huge loss. I know they're talking about the population increasing to forty thousand residents by the year twenty forty. I'm very skeptical about all that. I don't think we're going to get any more of this double track than what we had with the same. I think most of the growth is going to go on the South Lake Corridor, which is going into Lake County. But, you know, I think there's a lot of pros to it, too. We're not going to have any more prison guards being murdered here, maintenance workers being murdered here. We're not going to have three inmates escaping through the sewer, popping up out of the manhole cover, going to have a lunch at Blue Chip, sashaying over to Mayor Daley's house. We're not going to have any inmates escaping out of the garbage truck and never be heard from again, just vanishing off the face of the earth. And there's a lot, you know, I think we're going to have less calls for the Michigan City Fire Department. Earlier this year, they had a fire at the prison and an inmate lost to perish in the fire. So I, there's going to be a lot of positives. But, you know, when when the prison is finally demolished, it will be up to the governor to decide what's going to do with that. That's still going to be property of the state of Indiana. So whatever happens there is up the governor.
When is the prison scheduled to close?
They announced, I think, two weeks ago, they announced all the employees, the employees at Indiana State Prison, that in four years, they're going to build a new one point two billion dollar prison in Westville. They're going to close the Westville End Prison, and in four years, they're going to consolidate with Michigan City.
Commissioner Millsap.
Yes, the time is so. Basically, what you're saying is when they close the prison, our census numbers will drop drastically.
Right now, Michigan City, we have a population of approximately thirty-two thousand. And we have thirty-two thousand, but with the twenty-three hundred inmates, we're around like twenty-nine, five. And actually, a lot of people may not realize this, but Michigan City is regarded as what's called a city of the second class. That means we have a population of over thirty-four thousand. It's for cities with over thirty-four thousand. And it's kind of like how our municipal government is structured. You know, the city of the third class is kind of like La Porte, but since we're grandfathered in from being in the seventies, when we had over thirty-four thousand, where, you know, cities don't transition down, the only transition up. So that affects our funding, the way that that structure, like our CBDG. So it's really important, you know, we're going to always be a city of the second class.
And it also affects the structure of city government.
Yeah, yeah, we have nine council members and the mayor, and we also have a city clerk and a city controller, and a city of the third class. They have a seven-member council. The mayor serves as the council. And also, the clerk and the controller's office combined, like in La Porte, she's a La Porte Clerk treasurer. Here, we have a city clerk, Dale. Now, our city clerk and Yvonne Hoffman is our controller. It's really, you know, you know, we'd have basically reform our entire former local municipal government if we would transition down to a city of the third class, which we're never going to do.
Commissioner Benny.
I'm glad you brought that point up. I did have a discussion with several employees that work at, currently work for the Indiana State Prison. There are a lot of pros and cons, but the ones that are doing the frontline hardcore work, I'm getting a lot of feedback from them that they are very disappointed. One of the reasons why is because they're closing down and they're going to transition all these workers, four hundred workers, over to Westville. One of the things that people don't understand is that when they think that these workers work for Indiana State Prison, they don't work for Indiana State Prison. Indiana State Prison is just a facility. They work for the Indiana Department of Corrections. And with that, the Indiana Department of Corrections can transition these people to Miami Correctional. They can transition them anywhere. So the fact that they're closing down and they're thinking they're going to Westville is not the case. They could transfer them to any Department of Corrections facility in Indiana. So if they offer them a job in Miami, if they offer them a job at Pendleton or wherever, that means that they will have to accept that or retire or quit or go find another job when this might be the job that they, it's been their livelihood for years and years and years. And many of these workers have done a lot to put their children through college or whatever, and now they're uprooting them. And if you go to YouTube, there are a lot of clips on YouTube where you'll see a lot of the legislatures on there. And I witnessed one of the clips where the legislatures didn't even know that this was happening. I was told from what it seems like that there were backdoor deals being made and these legislatures weren't even a part of it. So they were asking, when was this decided on, this deal? But I was told that it's a done deal. So those are things we need to be aware of also.
Thank you, Ms. Benny. Mr. Johnson.
But Chairman, it's the same situation that they have with this hospital when they closed the hospital on Wallbag. It was the same situation, because I knew four or five people that worked at this hospital. And when they closed it down and built the new one, a whole lot of the workers at St. Francis Hospital was deported, and I want to use the word deported, high in other areas. So it matters how this city is functioning after the closing of the prison here in Michigan City. It will determine the financial structure as well as the population structure of this city.
Being a temporary visitor of Michigan City Indiana State Prison, I must say that for it to be maximum security, it's a long time coming. I don't like the prison being in Michigan City, but it does serve its purpose. They do need to make serious, the buildings in there are very old and it's very outdated, so.
Human rights conditions.
Yeah.
You know, very serious.
Is there anyone else has any other questions or dialogue, Mr.?
Something.
Go ahead.
Going back to our cities of the second classes, we only have one city of the first class in Indiana. That would be our state capital, Indianapolis. That's a city with over a half million people. Indianapolis is actually represented by twenty-nine council members. And so one other, besides Michigan City, there's two others, cities in Indiana, that is a city of the second class, their population is below thirty, thirty-four thousand. I had a conversation with Mayor Oberly about this when he was in office. One is East Chicago, Indiana, and the other is Marion, Indiana. And I think that's really interesting. They're almost like our sister cities. They're very similar in demographics to Michigan City. That's all I want to add.
Thank you, Tommy. Is there any other public comment?
I cannot. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Commissioner Fly. I just wanted to start off to tell you guys that I'm sorry for being late. I had been at a meeting since about forty, fifteen minutes into the meeting. I'd been here on Zoom. But I hadn't had anything to speak about or comment on. I kind of been in a, in a whirlwind. I know it is not Commissioners' comment now, so I will comment on what's appropriate right now. Tommy, I noticed you took this podium for over ten, fifteen minutes, this three-minute comment stand there. Also, of the information you were giving, I would hope that that is substantial and and one hundred percent bona fide information you're giving, considering.
Point of order.
Out to the public.
Point of order.
Out to the public.
Point of order. If you have, if you have a comment that you'd like to make, a question, you can go ahead and do that. We're not going to ridicule anyone with public comments. That's not going to happen.
Okay, the question I would like to make is, I guess the question would be more or less like, are we honoring three-minute comments or not?
No, as the president, if a person has making good, making points and not repeating herself, I will give them leeway.
Okay, I can, I can understand that, President McCormick. I got you on that. So I'll know for the future. I won't have to bring this up never again. So far as the prison being deteriorated overall on the west side, I've been there all of my, my natural life of living. And as McCormick said, he visits it there, fortunately on the other side of the wall. And myself, I went through the outside of it, but I have went through it and was at them times tearing down. It was very diminishedable and Westville was no better. So I do think our ultimate prison is needed for our Indiana states and all of our officers and prisoners. That's all I would have to say on that comment. Thank you, guys, for letting me come in and speak with you guys and be back part of the commission.
We have reached a point where we have Commissioners' comments. I will start at the very end and work our way down if we can try to just wrap it up as soon as possible. We did go a little bit longer, but I will not, I'm not going to pressure anyone in speeding up their process. Just be mindful. Ms. Benny?
I think I said everything I had to say during the time I spoke.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Conley.
I'd like to say thank you to Tommy for that very, very insightful information.
Yes.
And I think it was great because some of the things I knew and some of the things I didn't know. And I want to say to Pastor Hurt, I was part of that transition from Memorial to St. Anthony's to the new hospital.
Pastor Johnson.
I'm sorry, Pastor Johnson. And it was kind of different because, but we were able to move over and because we were grandfathered in from Memorial to the new hospital and from the new hospital to the newest hospital. And for those that want to stay, they stayed, and for those that want to leave, want to leave, whatever reasons that they had. I'm never scared.
Commissioner Millsap.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all the students on their first day of school. Let's make it through the whole year. Hopefully, no issues.
My brother.
My brother.
Commissioner Fly, my prayers are still with you, and I know you need much healing mentally, physically, emotionally. And I reach out to you whenever anything I can do for you, please feel free to give me a call. And, you know, I've been on the commission for a long time. And if it wasn't since nineteen fifty-one, if it wasn't for the African-American population of the community, I lived in a very poor part of town. And I lived in the back of a Caucasian big house that they lived in. We were poor. We lived in the back. And when I got polio, they gathered around me. Grandma May, she was about eighty-seven years old, came over and called the whole neighborhood, which was all African-American male. We were the only Caucasians. And I owe a lot to the African-American community. And that's why I'm here. And that's why I'm concerned for our children. Especially what's going on in these days. The shootings, the killings in Michigan City. And my heart just has always been grounded because if it wasn't for them, their prayers and being with my family, bringing over soup and bringing over, my house was quarantined. And they are the only ones that came and helped my family. And I'm sorry to say that even my own aunts and uncles and cousins, they were afraid because I had polio. And I was like a leopard. And that's why I'm here today to stand up and say how proud I am to be a part of this commission and the good that they have done. And that just touches my heart. I have a story, and one day, I'm going to give it to you. And when I'm long gone, I want you to, it's not about me. It's about my neighborhood. It's about my neighborhood, my African-American brothers and sisters and grandmas and grandpas that give us food when we didn't have any food. Set up my house quarantined, do not enter. Somebody knock on the door, my mom and my daddy had to say, you cannot come into this house. This house has been condemned and quarantined because I was, had polio from my neck down. I was in the but if it wasn't for them, thank God, thank God. For the African-American community, and I have a desire, and I always told God, if I make it through when others were dying. And right next to me, there were African-American children that had polio epidemic back in nineteen fifty-one, the same as I did. The only ambulance that came was to my house. They looked over there and seen my neighbors. And my buddies and my children that I hung around with, they passed away and they had polio. And they put me in the ambulance and took me off. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Hurt.
Thank you, Pastor. That helps answer some questions that I had. We had a prayer last night, a citywide prayer for school, for the students going back to school. We had a very nice turnout for that. And my thing is that we just pray for our children. They need it.
Yes.
And pray for the staff that they understand that children learn differently. And you can't cover everybody by one blanket. You have to understand their differences. And when the, when the teachers start understanding the differences, I think they'll get a better product out of our children.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Pastor Hurt, Ms. Moore.
First, I would like to thank the police for the National Night Out and all the people, all the resources that were there for the National Night Out in Michigan City on August the first at Pullman Park. It was very, well, I think it was well-attended. I couldn't say for the entire event, but it was pretty good with the especially the resources and the people that were there giving out items for the kids for the National Night Out in Michigan City. Second, I would like to say that the NAACP State Convention is going to be here in our city November the second through the fifth. And it's an honor that we were able to get the state convention brought here to Michigan City. And I definitely would like for the Commissions in Michigan City to participate in our state convention. November second through the fifth, twenty twenty-three, we will be sending out packets for ads and our souvenir journal. And so I would like for the city of Michigan City to participate in the NAACP State Convention. It's going to be at Purdue Northwest, the workshops and the main speakers. And then we will have a soul food dinner that will be at St. John's Church that's cooperating with us, with the NAACP State Convention. Thank you.
What's that date again?
November the second through the fifth.
Commissioner Cox.
Okay, I have one comment, and this is not directed at the Commission, but just piggybacking on what some of the comments you made in regard to this being the first just piggybacking on what some of the comments you made in regard to this being the first day of school. And this comment goes out to everybody who's working in the school system, all types of staff. If you're not anxious to work with the worst and the baddest and the, those who have the least, then you don't need to be there.
You're here. Uh, Pastor?
Johnson.
Pastor Johnson? I got two people raising one, yeah.
No, I don't have any.
And Commissioner Fly?
Okay, thank you, guys, once again, for allowing me to speak again at this Commissioners' hearing. Been quite some time, once again, getting back into my element. I fell off my square totally abruptly, and, um, man, you talking about a shuttle going headfirst. So I figured, um, while I'm laying in this bed right here, I don't know if you guys, I got it covered. I'm laying in the bed right now, and I'm getting a dressing change. I, I accumulated a bed sore that got infected. And if you guys know anything of bed sores, if it gets septic, it can kill you. So I was right at the stage of being, being there dead. But I've recovered fully, and, um, actually, I could have made this meeting in person. But unfortunately, my, my wound change was due at the same time. So I said, I gotta make something, and I gotta make my voice heard. I had noticed that maybe three of the Commissioners out of twelve or eleven granted me, um, harmony and told me they wished me well. The other eight or nine never said anything, not saying that they meant to, or they, they don't care, or they do care. So I, I've noticed little particular things, but I'm not gonna make the harbor with the commission. But I will say that with the things that I said previously, any apologies with all due respect that I gave to Commissioner McCormick and Commissioners Stacy Benny, I re- I recant those apologies with all due respect, and I stand on them fully. Um, anything else that I can leave for this commission is that I stepped down from president because I no longer felt that I was doing the right thing by trying to guide this commission. Especially when every time I tried to make things right, it seems to be making things wrong. And so, um, when I gave my apologies out, I had no apologies back. Things was done to me, said about me. Things were said about my organizations. No one accepted my apology. No one gave me one back. One thing I don't do is kiss, you know what? So all my stuff is recanted, and so far as the prisons and the city and the school systems, we all got to continue to work together. At the same time, we went on a downplay with the gun, guns towards the, um, start, beginning of the school year from the start. But the deal, there was a high point, and I'm not saying this by statistics. I'm saying this by being involved, by being there. Other than that, I'm not gonna keep up over to my three minutes. Take care, you guys.
Motion move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.